I move that we reconvene to an open meeting.
Okay.
Second?
I second. Oh, God.
Whereas the Falls Church School City, whereas the Falls Church Public School Board has convened a closed meeting on this day pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas Section 2.2-3711B of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Falls Church Public School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge. One, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Second?
Okay, Mr. Castillo, Mr. Chaney.
Yes.
Ms. Highland.
Yes.
Ms. Carney. Mr. Lawrence.
Yes.
Mr. Rastnik.
Yes.
And Mr. Sharp.
Yes.
Thank you. Boy, that is a...
All right. We're scheduled for the first session. We're going to do that...
Begin our regular meeting. Thank you. There. Oh, it must turn green on its own. Excuse me, we have new microphones. I'm going to start tonight, and we have the slides up for anybody that was in the audience just to be able to see. It's also available on Board Docs and the, everything is available online. So first of all, I thought one of the just great statistics I wanted you to have about testing and assessment because you hear teachers talk about how many SOL tests we take, and I just think it's, it's a lot of testing. Fifty-seven thousand, six tests were given in our school division last year, and that's over a period of just over two weeks. So it's a phenomenal amount of testing. Fifty-six thousand nine hundred and seventy-three of those are, were given utilizing technology and on the computer, so it takes a huge kind of infrastructure technology just to support testing in today. We do have special exceptions. We have to apply to the state for those if somebody can't take a test on the computer, and we had thirty-three of those. But I just, you know, I was actually shocked, and we had calculated this number before, but we were really digging for the data this year, and just seeing fifty-seven thousand, it's, it's a lot. You know, we're a very small school division. In reading in English, we were extremely pleased with how we tested this past year. This just shows you the, the new test, and again, this is the tech-enhanced items, brand-new assessment, how FCCPS did, and then also what the state results were. And when you see NOVA, I just put it as NOVA, but one of the school divisions that we try to benchmark ourselves against is Arlington, simply because they have the closest demographics and most similar to us. So when you see NOVA, that's actually Arlington scores because we know if we're off track with Arlington or with, or with the state or both, that we really have a little bit of work to do to understand what the test was asking. But again, very pleased with reading in English. In our math scores, you're looking at eleven, twelve, and twelve, thirteen because this is the second year of the new math assessment. And what we try to look at is how our third graders did last year, how they did this year as fourth graders, how our fourth graders did, how they did as fifth graders. You're always going to have a few different percentage score ranges where it can jump around a little bit. Probably the grade level, I think, that is the most challenging, challenging for us with this new assessment, and it's had us a little bit baffled, the seventh-grade math. And you can see anytime we get scores that are kind of right there with the state, and we know we're behind Arlington a significant amount, there's something about the new tech-enhanced items that are throwing us off, and we are studying that right now vigorously, trying to figure out what's going on there. And it's not because people aren't working hard. We're very pleased again with our Algebra I. We have an MEH and a GM score, just to show you the breakout there, depending on, we really, they report us as a division score, but they do break this down where I could give it to you. We also have our Algebra II scores, and those are, were phenomenal this year, really figuring out what this new assessment was asking, obviously. And then the same with geometry. So extremely strong math scores. We just have one grade level right now that we're very targeted on. In our science scores, again, you know, we, we do extremely well. We look at where the state is, we look at where that Northern Virginia score is, and you can see ours are all in eighties and nineties, and so we're very pleased with that performance. And I will say probably one thing that happened last year that you see in elementary is much more focus on reading and math because they're so heavily weighted for teachers with two new tests. History, again, we have phenomenal history department, and are staying strong with our scores there. And, and just to remind you, we'll come back and talk more in depth about any of these and questions that you have, so I'm trying to go fairly quickly tonight just to give you an idea what you're looking at. For our Division AMO targets, this shows you what our pass rate was, what our actual annual measurable objective. This is the target the state says you have to at least get to this point, and if we met that target. And so this is our Division Report Card for participation, performance, math participation and math performance. Now, I will tell you that when you dig into these results, it is like crazy-making, that's what I call it, because our scores, even that are posted on the VDOE site, are not how this AMO is calculated. And Lisa and I spent the other day with the person who does this for the VDOE, trying to get a better understanding of how they're calculating, and it's still, it's just, it's a puzzle. And as we move into this A to F Report Card, if the two of us are still struggling with the calculation, they did give us a file that is through the EIMS system, which is a statistical system that's provided the school divisions where we can extract a file and then calculate it. But I just share that with you because if you look at different, if you look different places on the VDOE website, you will see differences in scores by one, two points, three points, depending which score you're looking at. Our IB and AP performance at George Mason, total number of exams, we gave seven hundred and twenty-one IB exams, one hundred and ninety-six AP, thirty-seven different content tests. And that's a phenomenal number when you think of the size of our high school and what a rigorous schedule we actually put together for our students. Our IB exams surpassing the international average is just one thing we love about IB is we're able to benchmark to what's going on in the world, and sixteen of thirty-three of those surpassed the international averages. Our overall scores, twelve of thirty-three IB exams had hundred percent passing scores, which is phenomenal, really, really strong scores. And then in the packet behind, what I provided for you tonight are all of the breakdown, and this is again on Board Docs as well. It's a sheet with lots of colors on it, and Lisa, I don't know if it'll let you bring Board Docs up, but, and what you're looking at on here is everything, there, there are two pages. One is IB, the second page is the AP scores, and it gives you the breakdown where we increased from last year to this year. You can also look where we were stronger. Anything that's in pink, for instance, was stronger than the international average. And then also what were the percentage of students that were passing. And when you look at the sheet, and I don't know if Lisa will be able to get it up, there's lots and lots of pink, which is great because that means we're outperforming not just in Virginia or in the United States, but in, in the world. And then our AP scores are right behind that. We have a much smaller AP program because most of our, our courses are IB, but those are provided for you. Behind that, you will, we have printed off the basic Report Card for each school and for the school division that will actually, when you go online, you can look and see how we did meeting our federal AMO target and then also state targets, which are different again, and that's one reason that you'll sometimes see a score that may be a ninety-four on one report and a ninety-six or ninety-seven on another report. For our federal AMO, we hit, when we look at all of our students, we hit, we were hitting our targets there. This year, they're using what's called a gap group, and quite frankly, we have to look them up every time we talk about them because they're just confusing. So I would encourage you to look at Gap Group One, Gap Group Two, and Gap Group Three, which are made up of different subgroups. Behind that, we actually have our George Mason Report Card, and it gives you the state accreditation results for all of our students. It also gives you our gap group scores down on the very bottom where we hit our targets there. The one area at the division level, Lisa, help me, where it was economically disadvantaged, where we had one AMO that we didn't hit at the federal level, but we did hit it at the state level. And then we have one AMO at the state level, which is MEH, ESOL, but we did hit it at the federal level. So that, those are the two targeted areas for us. Everything else was a yes, we hit the target. And those Report Cards are all available online. And again, we'll do a longer session where we come back. This is for your reading, for you to be able to look at, ask questions, to prepare for the next big work session we'll do on. Sorry, go ahead, Lisa.
I was just saying, with the TS, where it's too small, we have to, we're really looking at that number because pretty soon, the, the number changed from fifty to thirty this year, so pretty soon, we're going to be meeting that number of thirty for all of our students in that population. So although it looks really nice when it says TS, too small, we won't be too small for long, so.
Yeah. So that's, this is testing in a nutshell, and it's kind of like a huge, big puzzle that we all try to figure out, and it's, what we really try to be, I think, very cognizant of is that all of our kids are achieving at the highest level, and it's, that's, it doesn't matter what subgroups they're in, and that's our expectation at the school level and for all of us. Behind the school Report Cards, what you will see, you've heard a lot about STAR testing, and as a matter of fact, it was on Twitter today because we just started, and, and we were tweeting that out, and the kids were testing on their iPad app for the first time today where we'd used laptops previously. But it shows you at each grade level last year what the percentile was at the beginning of the year, what the percentile was at the end of the year, but you can also look at a score that says GE, and that means grade equivalency. So we want to make sure that every grade level's growing, at least one full year's growth. And what you see with our elementary, we were really pleased at the end of the year, second grade was one point six, third graders grew at one point six, fourth grader had one point six, and fifth grade grew at two point three, grade equivalent, which is a lot of growth for the school year for a whole grade level. And sixth grade, and this one was just really kind of amazing what they were doing in math, four point nine growth for the year. So they really made some big adjustments, probably also with the tech-enhanced items. Seventh grade, and this is another interesting thing, and we say this about our SOLs all the time, these are not easy tests, and if it's, and if you're as a whole group, not at the eighty-fifth percentile, as a whole class, which means, or as a student in the top fifteen percent of the country, you more than likely will not pass the SOL. So our seventh grade scores, who we are most worried about on the SOL, when you actually look, had four point six grade equivalency and growth. I see Amanda nodding her head out there because she's a middle school teacher saying, thank goodness you pointed that out, because they made phenomenal growth, but that still didn't pass that SOL that we're trying to figure out. And in eighth grade, we didn't have a growth score. Some of our classes, we will start to have, depending on the grade level, two and three years' growth now because this, we're going into our third year of implementation depending on the grade level. Behind that, we also introduced first grade assessment last year to help us. They started with an early literacy. This year, we're actually moving to STAR because we felt like this data was not robust enough. Our kids were able to surpass it too far at the end of the year, but, so they did great, but we really want to give a first grade assessment. Behind that, you can see that there is also some reporting options that were just by class overall in reading, and I think you're with me, Lisa. Yeah, I'm going really fast. At Thomas Jefferson, and again, you can look at their reading scores, they're all more than a grade equivalency and growth. Other than in second grade, we saw a point three, but as you'll notice, in second grade, there were only twenty-one students counted. And that's because we didn't implement the assessment at the beginning of the year, and so that was one of those years where we were trying to figure out as a team what we really wanted everybody to do. So those scores, I'm, I'll leave those for you, but I encourage you to look at the GE, which is the grade equivalency, and then you can also look at percentile and see kind of how that means our grade levels did, but we're very pleased with where we are. We always have more work to do, and we're working on it right now, and we'll continue to do so because we want every student in Falls Church to pass the rest of well, that's a given, and we want maximum growth for all of our kids. Is that fast enough? Wow. Sorry. Bill, thank you for that, I appreciate it, and I apologize to everybody here that we were running late, but we had a few closed session items to discuss. Thank you, Dr. Jones, and we'll have a work session here coming up soon to talk about this all in more detail. All right, so let's move now to the regular meeting part of the show and start with a Pledge of Allegiance, please.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the next item is the adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Still moved.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next is public comment. I do have one slip for public comment. Good evening, Ms. Blanchard.
It's good to see you all again. I bring you greetings today from the Falls Church City Education Association. As we enter a new school year, we wanted to remind you of our focus and commitment to advocating for the best education for all students. This commitment extends to all school staff. Every member of Falls Church City Public Schools, from custodians to paras, to office staff, to teachers, is an important member of our FCCPS family. We have some challenges ahead of us as a school system, but if we work together and ensure that everyone's voice is heard and recognized, we can continue the excellent education system that we all provide to our students. FCCA looks forward to a great year of working together. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks. All right, are there any letters to the board?
There is one written communication to the school board from Stephanie Oppenheimer. Ms. Oppenheimer writes with questions and concerns about full-day Wednesdays that have been inserted into the calendar.
All right, thank you very much. That will be added to the public record. Moving along to recognition and reports, item 6.01. For those of you in the city who maybe were away on vacation last June, the school board did sponsor a day-long visioning session and forum for the schools. We had about a hundred and forty folks from all walks of life in the community join us on a Saturday from nine until about four o'clock, where we had a lot of conversation about what the unique challenges are for the schools, the strengths, and the kinds of things we should be looking at as input to the school's planning and visioning process that we've been going through this summer. As you can imagine, coordinating a day-long session of that type takes a lot of effort, and so tonight, I want to recognize Mary Beth Connelly for her leadership in making that happen. She worked many, 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 many hours with the planning group before we had the session, with our consultants and facilitators on that day, and then since that time, countless hours collating, aggregating, and helping us to report the results to the school board and to the community. So, Mary Beth, I have a little certificate to give you. [applause] That was fun. Next is the consent agenda, Mr. Kimball.
Yes, and I would like to personally thank Mr. Rastnik for fortifying me with Kit Kat bars prior to reading this three-page consent agenda. Thank you, Mr. Rastnik. Okay. First item, personnel appointments. If the school board approved the following staff appointments for the 2013-14 school year. Joseph Musket, physical education paraprofessional, Mount Daniel. Terry McLean, kindergarten paraprofessional, Mount Daniel. Ilka Davis, first grade paraprofessional, Mount Daniel. Jeanette Ramos, family literacy paraprofessional, Mount Daniel. Maya Good, preschool paraprofessional, Mount Daniel. Jill Waddles, part-time preschool paraprofessional, Mount Daniel. Patricia Hoffman, ten-month secretary, Mount Daniel. Lisa Ferguson, special ed paraprofessional, Mount Daniel. Gina Perotti, kindergarten paraprofessional, Mount Daniel. At Thomas Jefferson. Mariah Baldner, second grade teacher. Robert Carey, fourth grade teacher. Deborah Newman, ten-month secretary. Emma Getz, special education paraprofessional. Amanda Wolf, special education paraprofessional. At Mary Ellen Henderson Middle School. Lindsay Greenberg Brown, sixth grade science social studies teacher. Adam White, special education teacher. Stephanie Ferrera, seventh grade language arts teacher. Kevin Blair, ESOL teacher. And at George Mason High School, Jessica Rafter, special education teacher. Daniel Larkham, special education paraprofessional. Gwendolyn Anderson, special education paraprofessional. Jennifer Chauji, part-time special education paraprofessional. Claire Smith, band paraprofessional, system-wide. Peru Fustero, special education para, system-wide. Amy Thomas, special ed vision paraprofessional, system-wide. Inez Hernandez, paraprofessional, system-wide. Ruth Sejasoto, school bus driver. Ashley Butler, school bus driver. And Daryl Hardy, school bus driver. And also, point Candace Davis, curriculum innovation and personnel specialist, two central office effective August the fifth, two thousand and thirteen. Retirement. If the school board accept the following retirement. Sue Wallen, human resource and licensure specialist, central office, effective July thirty-first, two thousand and thirteen. Resignations. If the board accept the following resignations. James McDowell, building services supervisor, system-wide, effective July twenty-sixth, two thousand and thirteen. Marisa Strickland Alderdyce, Marissa, excuse me, Alderdyce, ESOL teacher, Mary Ellen Henderson, effective for the 2013-14 school year. Declined position, Jacqueline Lovelli, special education teacher, effective the 2013-14 school year. Changes in position. If the school board approve the following change in positions. Brian Fowler, from maintenance building technician to building services supervisor, effective July twenty-ninth, two thousand and thirteen. And Molly Narburg, from assistant superintendent secretary slash program specialist, two curriculum innovation and personnel specialist, one in the central office, effective August first, two thousand and thirteen. Leave of absence. If the school board approve a leave of absence for, for a Thomas Jefferson employee, effective November twentieth, two thousand and thirteen, to December twentieth, two thousand and thirteen. Long-term medical leave of absence. If the school board approve a long-term medical leave of absence for a Mount Daniel employee, effective until November fourth, two thousand and thirteen. Extra pay for extra-duty resignation. If the board accept the following EPED resignation. One extracurricular activity, EPED assignment, George Mason, effective immediately. EPED assignments, appointments. If the board approve the following extra pay for extra-duty assignments for the 2013-14 school year. Four instructional leadership assignments, CERT. Nine instructional leadership assignments, Thomas Jefferson. Seven extracurricular activity assignments, Thomas Jefferson. Six instructional leadership assignments, Mary Ellen Henderson. Fifteen extracurricular activity assignments, Mary Ellen Henderson. Two extracurricular activity assignments, George Mason. One instructional leadership EPD assignment, system-wide. Twenty athletic EPD assignments, George Mason, for the 2013 fall season. One EPD assignment, George Mason, for the 2014 winter season. And one EPD assignment, athletic assignment for George Mason, for the 2014 spring season. Advisory committee resignations. If the board accept the following advisory committee resignation. June buyer, ESOL advisory committee, effective immediately. Shannon Johnson, Tish Pew, and Robin Williams, from the Support Employees Advisory Committee, effective immediately. Advisory committee appointments. If the school board approve the following advisory committee appointments. To seek for a term ending June, two thousand and fourteen. Stephanie McMaw, extended daycare, to seek for a term, for terms ending June, two thousand and fifteen. Shay Wakely, Mount Daniel. Lauren Washington, Thomas Jefferson. Nana Enningfull, Mary Ellen Henderson. Sean Fernandez, George Mason High School. Mary Beth Connelly, central office. Nikki Wise Miller, food service. And Daryl Hardy, transportation. School-affiliated organization annual filings. If the school board approve the following SAO annual filings for the 2013-14 school year. Elementary PTA, Mary Ellen Henderson Middle School PTA, George Mason PTSA, FCCPS band boosters, GM athletic boosters, and Falls Church Education Foundation. Approval of interrupted residency. If the school board approve an interrupted residence under Policy 9.21 for two GM students until house repairs are completed and the family is able to reestablish their residency. Under anticipated residency. If the school board approve the following enrollments for the 2013-14 school year under Policy 9.21. Anticipated residency. Two students, Mary Ellen Henderson, seventh grade, and TJ, well, two students, one at seventh grade, Mary Ellen Henderson, and the other, fourth grade, at Thomas Jefferson, and two students from another family, one at tenth grade at George Mason, well, one at tenth grade at George Mason, and the other at eleventh grade at George Mason. School band trip, student band trip. If the school board approve a George Mason student band trip to Myrtle Beach, South Carolina to attend a National Music Festival from Thursday, April third, to Sunday, April sixth, two thousand and fourteen. And school board liaison assignments. If the school board approve the 2013 school board liaison assignments to the advisory committees as presented.
Wow. All right. I need a bottle of water after that.
I move the adoption of the consent agenda as read.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Is there a second to that?
I second, but I do have a comment. So, Mr. Chaney nudged me during that rather impressive reading of the consent agenda and asked me, isn't there a way to actually consent to this without putting poor Mr. Kimball through this? And I'm glad he asked me this three and a half years into sitting up here, but yes, I think that you can actually, going forward, do the same thing we do with the minutes. They're a part of the record, so it's something you may want to think about, and at the very least to try to save Mr. Kimball's voice if you have to do this much more in the future.
And I do appreciate that, Mr. Rastnik. I do know that Mary Ellen Shaw, this is back in the, back in the mid-nineties, actually, I think we did address this with the, with the city attorney at the time, and what we ended up with was, is the current practice. However, it may be time to revisit that, so, thank you.
Robert's rules would say you could consent to it, and I bet everybody in that crowd wishes we would.
I believe you. But there's madness to our methods.
Right. Very good. Okay, and maybe we can check with John Foster on that. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, very good. We've consented to the consent agenda. Moving on to business action information.
Excuse me?
Sure. We have a policy question, the first reading of Bylaw 2.15. Dr. Jones?
Um, we're trying to get, there we go. For student liaison to the school board, just making some updates to the policy. What you see in black on Board Docs is the original policy, and then what you see in red is what has been recommended as a change. What you see in green is when the change came to both Ms. Skidell and myself, the green had been taken out. We do want to put that green back in, make that recommendation if we could. I think it may have just been on error, and the green portion was just that, it was the what we worked out with the high school last year in the way that we take nominations, and that way we know there's a deadline, and all the nominations go to the office of the principal, who then gives those nominations, if they're completed in full and on time, to the advisor for the SGA. So this basically is making sure that for our student rep, that before we have a vote of the board, that the chair can ask for a comment, and then that they have a nameplate, and that they're a liaison to all student council associations. And Mr. Sharp, I know worked on, on this and sent that to Ms. Skidell, so he may have some further comments.
All right, are there any questions or comments on this matter, starting with Maeve? Do you have any questions or comments?
I would just like to say that, new microphone, sorry. I really appreciate the opportunity to comment on everything the board votes on. I think that's very important to me, and it's definitely something that's important if this position is supposed to have some sort of effect where the students in the future can feel like they have some sort of impact, or at least voicing their opinion. I think that's very important. And of course, I appreciate the identification as well. So those are my two biggest things, and the reminder that I'm a liaison to all the student councils is also important, so make sure we're representing every grade level.
All right, thank you very much. I'm going to start on this end. Any comments? No? Anyone on this end other than Karen in there? No, Karen?
I'll, I'll just suggest that we have had a chance to see the substantive elements that are here at an earlier meeting also to discuss them, and I would, in a somewhat modified motion, move to bypass first reading and approve second reading and adoption of Bylaw 2.15 as presented.
All right, thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
All right, very good. And are there any other questions or concerns? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Aye? And are there any opposed? All right, very good. Thank you. Next, item 8.02, approval of school board resolution on OEI legislation. I'm going to turn that over, I think, to Mr. Sharp.
Yes, the OEI is the Opportunity Education Institution.
Second.
All right, very good. And are there any other questions or concerns? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
And are there any opposed? All right, very good. Thank you. Next item eight point oh two, approval of school board resolution on OEI legislation. I'm going to turn that over, I think, to Mr. Sharp.
Yes, the OEI is the Opportunity Education Institution. It was enacted by the General Assembly in their two thousand thirteen session. It is a provision that the state would take over a local school division or individual local schools if they fail to meet certain benchmarks and it, they're, they're indications of failing school over a number of, of years. There are only four or five, I think, total schools that currently would fall in that category. And one of them in Norfolk, where, where a suit has arisen. The, the Norfolk City Board, along with the Virginia School Boards Association, has sued the state to essentially enjoin the operation of this statute. Since that time, the Attorney General has indicated that he would not defend the suit so that the state, if it's going to put up any defense, it would need to bring in a special counsel to do so. So, that will probably at least delay things a little bit. But there is pretty sound, pretty firmly grounded position on, on each side, and so I, I think the suit probably will go forward. But the, the resolution that the VSPA has recommended is to indicate that the statute is unconstitutional. It violates one of the provisions of the Virginia Constitution, which indicates that the matters of operation of local schools should be run by local school boards. And I've also indicated that there are instances where local school boards have indeed taken action to turn around challenged or what might be called failing schools, and they've been successful. And it's really something that's happened in a variety of parts of the state. Virginia Beach, Martinsville, Danville, Fairfax County. So, I would offer the resolution for adoption this evening.
All right, thank you, Mr. Sharp. Are there any questions about this matter? Anyone?
Yeah, I just have a comment.
Yep.
First, want to continue to thank Mr. Sharp for his work in our legislative matters. And secondly, I just wanted to say honestly, if the legislature would spend more attention doing things like restoring funding and things like that, they probably wouldn't have to worry about taking schools over. So, it's really so ironic to me. So, anyway, thank you, Mr. Sharp. Fully support this.
All right, anything else? Yes, sir.
I, I would just do a riff on what Mr. Raznik said and, and hope fervently that the money that could be spent hiring a special counsel could go instead to educating Virginia's children and we could move on and do more constructive things.
Thank you very much. Ms. Curtin, do you have a comment on this item? All right, thank you very much. All right, so I think we're ready to vote on this?
I move that the school board approve the resolution supporting legal challenge to the Opportunity Education Institution as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Thank you, Mr. Raznik. All in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
And are there any opposed? All right, very good. You're on a roll, Mr. Sharp, so let's just continue to talk about ESEA and budget.
You're probably aware that the Elementary and Secondary Education Act is the foundation for federal support of local education agencies. It was initially enacted in nineteen sixty-five. It has been renewed a number of times since then, most recently in two thousand one, which means that it's long overdue for reauthorization. And there has been, in the intervening time, also a, an action to sequester funds across the board for federal activities. And among them are education support activities so that in addition to having this delay in, in renewing the, the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, we have a, a gradual reduction going on in budgeted funds from the federal to the local levels, local and state levels for that matter. So, there's a double problem. There are two different bills that are attempting to address these issues, and they are highly partisan. One is a House bill that a great majority of the Republican side has supported, and the NSBA has inserted language into that bill that, that puts language from, from a separate NSBA bill that they, they wanted to see basically a mandate relief type of approach at the federal level, similar to what we've seen at the Virginia level. But that's, that's happened on the House side, that's already passed the House. On the Senate side, there's only been action in a Senate committee. But on the Senate committee, that's a Democrat-dominated committee, and only Democrat votes pass that, that bill in committee. So, there's, there's quite a rift over what would actually come out. The one bill is over a thousand pages in the House, pardon me, in the Senate. And in the, in the House, it's about a five hundred fifty-page bill. So, so just, just from the number of pages, there's obviously a, a great difference. And the, the attempt here is to, to request a compromise where there can be a renewal of support from the federal level, both in terms of the substantive matters of the Elementary and Secondary Education Act and in the funding. In order to get any increase in, in funding, the sequestration would have to be lifted, and that's, that's part of the request, request here. One of the elements that the two competing Senate and House bills do not confront at this point is the, is the area of preschool. And the, the proposal that I've put forward is, you'll see, there's a draft letter that's a draft communication to our congressional representatives. It's asking for a gradual increase in funding that would include preschool as well as K through twelve. And there is bipartisan agreement separately on having additional funding for preschool. The hope is that by rolling all of this together, that there could be a, a break in the impasse that so far exists and, and some progress on, as I said, both the Substantive Elementary and Secondary Education Act and the, the budget. So, there's, I, I know there was desire for board members to have a chance to discuss the issues, and I'd be happy to try to answer questions or other, I'd certainly welcome hearing other comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp, for the board and the community, to remind you that the recommended action here is to allow the chairman to send a letter to our congressional members on behalf of this board. All right, so who has questions or comments on this particular matter? Mr. Chaney, Mr. Raznik?
Just ask for you to call for abstains in this vote, please.
Any questions down on this end? No? No?
I'd simply like to thank Mr. Sharp for his work on this and, and all of our legislative issues, but this one in particular is so far-reaching and important for all of us and our families in our community. And I commend him for his proactive stance on this particular thing. If you've looked at his draft letter, it, it talks in the first paragraph about the declining funding. It doesn't talk about the increasing number of kids, and I think that, so the declining funding is even more of a problem because we have more children who need these services. Just by, by way of record, I would say that we do have, in the congressional delegation from Virginia, a history of leadership on items like these and on finding solutions. And so hopefully this letter will encourage members of Congress to, to work toward that. So, if there are no other questions or concerns, we'll call the vote on this one.
Actually, there was one thing I just recalled. I think I had asked you about this when we spoke, Mr. Sharp. In the first communication that you sent out to us, you had noted that we should ask Fairfax Arlington County Boards to join with us. And have you any information about that?
Well, I believe the desire was to have an internal discussion first, but certainly it was recommended that the contact could be facilitated with our, our state representative who represents the Alexandria Arlington and Falls Church Boards, that's Lila Wise. The, one, one main reason to include Fairfax County in this is that one of the members of the House Appropriations Committee is Frank Wolf. And so, only by getting Fairfax into, into the mix could we get a, a contact that would be part of his constituency. We, we already have, of course, Representative Moran who represents Arlington, Alexandria, and, and Falls Church. And then he, he too is a member of the Appropriations Committee in the House. On, on the Senate side, Senator Warner and Senator Kane, as, as Susan pointed out, had this tradition of bipartisan activity. And I think, I think we, we could anticipate some very strong activity from, from them on this issue.
Thank you. Anything else?
May I just ask a question, Mr. Sharp? Is there an amount that we would like to see? Should we weigh in on what an appropriate sum would be, or are we going to leave it to their good judgment?
Well, as it, as the situation rests, you'll see that we're in a declining budget. And I, I think there is some opportunity to request a gradual increase overall from fiscal year twelve funding, especially if, if funding for preschool is included, which currently is not part of the, at least, only to a small extent is there, is there a support for preschool activity in the current federal, federal scheme of things. There, there was proposal to greatly increase that, that level. And so if, if we can get an overall increase covering pre-K through, through twelve, I think that's probably as specific as, as we can get at this point. I'm, you know, I'm certainly willing to take, take direction if you think some, some more specific figure is, is helpful.
All right. Anything else? All right, very good. I'll call the vote then. All in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And any abstentions?
Abstain.
Thank you, Mr. Raznik. All right. Next item is approval of the school board two thousand thirteen to two thousand fifteen triennial plan and the two thousand thirteen fourteen staff work plan. By way of background for the community on this item, I mentioned earlier in our meeting that we had a community-wide visioning session in June. One of the purposes for that was to collect feedback from the community about priorities for the school board over the next several years and to understand a little bit more of the community's vision for our school division. We've collected that information. We collected information from the board's perspective, from staff leadership perspective, and the school board has spent the summer coming up with a one-page document that you see here on board docs that outlines the vision and mission for our school division and then the key pillars, which are, that's our term for areas of focus, and priorities within those pillars for the next three years. The idea is this will signal to the board, to staff, to the community, to city council and others exactly what we're doing here for the next several years in a, in a succinct and clear fashion, so that there's no question. It's complemented by a work plan, and I'm going to have Dr. Jones talk about that in just a second. Before I turn it over to her to talk about the work plan, I just wanted to check in with my colleagues who've seen a couple drafts of this to see if there are any lingering questions or concerns about the document as it is on board docs this evening. No? 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 Ms. Curtin, did you have comments on this item?
Just one thing, I've heard from a number of students who have heard about the idea of implementing some sort of service requirement or project-based learning in the community. They're concerned about the idea of forced service, so I would just, you know, approaching it in sort of a different way, but I do think it's an important thing to look to, and it will strengthen community, city, school and city relations.
All right. Thanks for that input. We are going to look at that, but there's no definition of what it would be or how it would work at this point. So, thanks for that feedback. That's, that's very helpful. Dr. Jones, do you want to talk a little bit about the work plan? And then we'll move to adopt these.
And I'll be very careful that we will not read the whole thing because there are fifty-one key action steps, and so I definitely encourage anybody in the public to look online. I think the one thing that I, I am most excited about with our work plan is that the school board has set out the priorities, but they're also very closely linked to the work that was done in the visioning and the mini sessions. And so the people that gave up time this summer, I really wanted to have a voice about some of the work that we would do. I think that the community will see that reflected all the way through the work plan, which is great. Establishing the Technology Advisory Committee. We have a lot of people excited about technology in, in the city because it was a cross-section of individuals that were there. But when you read through it, you'll also notice the pillars are still very much a part and a core of who we are as a school division. You know, having excellent staff, making sure we're focused on compensation, all of those key components that we've had for a long time. We also have, you'll notice, instead of small schools, we came to the realization this year that that pillar is going to have to change. A small school is not seven hundred plus and growing students. And so, modern, secure schools, feeling very confident about that, but also trying to maintain that small school feel, and we're going to work incredibly hard to do that. Doesn't change the core of who we are, but we just know our schools aren't going to be teeny-tiny anymore. Trying to maintain class size, looking at growth, and superintendent's report later, I'll share with you some enrollment numbers. Readiness for learning is a pillar that I think is very unique to this school division in that really taking care of all children and all families, and very proud of what's in there. And more than anything, it's an analysis this year for us to make sure we're still doing everything we can. I will say on that note, I just want to share that one thing Fairfax County, and while we are considerably smaller, we are also seeing here is an increase in homeless families. And so we're very focused, our social workers, our psychologists, everybody with our team is very focused on making sure we're taking care of those children. Probably the most difficult thing about readiness for learning in, in a school division in northern Virginia is trying to get your child enrolled when you don't have an address. And that really takes a team of people to really help families. So, that readiness to learn, that piece is not necessarily reflective in here, but I just want you to know that it, it's part of the core of what we're working with. Small classes, again, when we say small, I think it's important that we're committed to a small, reasonable, small class size. Early childhood is not to be greater than twenty-two, and third and higher at twenty-four, trying to stay not greater than twenty-four. We're not talking about class sizes that are fourteen or fifteen or when we say small. Responsible fiscal management, we have a lot of focus areas there this year. And again, that is very, was very strong in the visioning. Is there a way to establish a financial school funding, you know, estimate, working closer with the city? And we're going to work very hard, Mr. Kimball and I both, on working with the city staff on that. Revenue model between school and city. And then also conducting a third-party audit. That's something we've talked about for a long time in the school division, that we really want another pair of eyes to look at our operational side and how we spend and how we organize. And then last- And then last, but not least behind all of that are strategic metrics on how we measure, did we hit our target or did we not? Some of these items are one-year, some are two, and some will be over the three-year period. So that's a very long document, as short as I can do.
All right. Any questions, comments by members of the board on this? Mr. Rasmussen?
Yeah, just a quick one. I know we could take a long time talking about this, but I just want to thank my fellow board members for including the teacher compensation provision. I think it's important. I would like to have gone farther, but I am glad, I think it's a worthy goal. Our teachers are really the heart, in my opinion, of this system. And I'm glad we're going to really push to try to bring some parity to their pay. So thank you.
Mr. Lawrence?
Just two things. First, I'm not going to offer any amendments, but we're looking to have a retreat in December along with our incoming members. And I think we really do need to look at vision and mission. I mean, they are two different things. What we've got here is more a squishy, warm, fuzzy feeling rather than, I think, a vision or a mission. And I think we should really sit down and actually talk about it and figure out what it is. And then secondly, to talk about, to address what Dr. Jones said about the, you know, having an increase in homeless families, the approach doesn't even stop at the schools. I mean, I'm the liaison to the daycare advisory board, and, you know, Michael and Kuman, the audience is on the board. And, you know, the daycare program tries to make sure that, you know, it's not just they're taken care of at the schools, and then after that, you know, you don't see them until the next day. But, you know, the daycare program is trying to address it too, so they've got, you know, safe place to be, not going home alone. And I just think it's great that we've got a very holistic approach to something that, you know, some people may not think exists in the city, but it does, and we're dealing with it, you know, in a very comprehensive manner.
All right. Thank you. On this end, Ms. Hyland, any comments? Oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to point out that one of the key things for me is that, you know, the facilities question is obviously not just us. It's very much a community planning commission, City Council, and I think we reflect that well in our plan.
Thank you.
Yes. I just wanted to say that, you know, initially, I think I had expressed to Dr. Jones, I found this to be a little ambitious, and it concerned me. But after spending a couple of weeks, you know, reading through things and digesting everyone else's comments, it does seem to really reflect, you know, a good forward-thinking plan for the next, you know, for, obviously for the year, but then the triennial plan as well. I really do appreciate it, so thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gistey, any comments? Mr. Sharp, anything on this?
Actually, I have several, sorry.
No, that's fine. That's why we ask.
There are two documents here, which is a little different than last year's procedure, where we had just one that was our work plan. And I think this is a good approach. It helps to see a sort of two different levels. One level that the board is most focused on, and the second level that is more of a staff focus. But I think there is a good opportunity for partnership across the two documents. And I look forward to helping to build that relationship as this moves along. I think that the two documents do work well together. The issue of small schools, that's really becoming an extremely difficult thing throughout our region. I know I've been in touch with a fellow who was Teacher of the Year at Falls Church City Schools in 1986. He's returned as a Marshall High School English teacher. And Marshall has English high school classes, at least all of his are 30 people apiece. And that wasn't intended to be that way, but that's just the way it has to be, given the way that so many people have shown up to come to schools in Northern Virginia. I also want to mention that within the one-page document, there are a few language tweaks from the way we saw this last week. And one of them is under the 21st Century Teaching and Learning. The third bullet there talks about a continued emphasis on special populations, which we had a special populations focus within our visioning. And within that discussion, as I understand it, one of the special populations that people pointed out was the population that really isn't identified as special, sometimes called kids in the middle. That's not necessarily a great moniker. But what is suggested here is that while we'd continue emphasis on those identifiable special populations, like special ed, English as a second language, and gifted, we'd also improve our focus on students not in one of those special categories. And that's intended to capture those, it's intended to capture that idea from the visioning and to assure that we have some across the board special activity for all kinds of students. That's all I have for tonight. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Last comments before I call for the vote on these. I would want the community to know that every word in these two documents has been read, reread, drafted, redrafted, and discussed. So there's really nothing in here that's not quite intentional on the part of the school board and the leadership team of the schools. And so when you see these documents, I just want you to understand that. I am going to charge my colleagues with disseminating these throughout the community. Of course, they'll be on our website. But as you go to your liaison assignments, as you talk to people in the community, these documents are our record of what we're going to accomplish, and we want everyone to understand them. I want to encourage people in the community, if you see them on the website, to, and you have questions or issues or concerns, contact a member of this board or Dr. Jones and let us know what you're thinking. Because these will be living documents. Every year, we revisit them to make sure that we still feel these are the right pillars and priorities and that the work plan for the year coincides with those things. So we'll always be looking for input. All right. If there's no other discussion, I'll call for the vote to approve these two documents, which are one of the core things that school boards do, which is set vision and mission. Yes, Mr. Gistey?
Madam Chair, I just had one question, and maybe I forgot or overlooked something. But with respect to staff, we'd have the discussion of teacher pay. And it says no lower than three, no more than 3% lower than Arlington, Alexandria, or Fairfax County. Originally, I believe, we just worked with Arlington?
Yeah. So that change was made for a couple reasons. One, because Arlington, Alexandria, and Fairfax are the people we compete most closely with. And since this document has at least a three-year timeframe, it may well be that in the future, Fairfax County decides to aggressively increase teacher pay, or Alexandria does. And I think the intent of the board was that our teachers be paid along the best. So that was why it was broadened.
So are we going with the highest of the three? Or what's the? It could create the opportunity for confusion if there's a spread.
Okay.
I would certainly entertain a motion to amend it to say the highest of the three, if you'd like to.
I think that was the board's intent. I believe it was.
Because it reads within 3%, right?
Right. Right. So we can amend that.
And I'll just, one more point on that particular line. Should that year there be 2016 instead of 2018?
That is another good question. In the last version of this, Dr. Jones had indicated that it would, that this would apply to teachers who had been with us five years or longer. In board discussion, I got the sense that many people on the board were uncomfortable with that, that whatever we do should apply to all teachers, not just ones here five years or longer. And so, in conversation with Dr. Jones, what we did was we incorporated all teaching staff, but we extended the timeframe to accomplish this so that we could phase it in financially in a better way. Does that make sense? That gives us a couple more years to get it all done.
In a perhaps more general context, it would. But I think in our particular context, we had been seeing that the teachers who are first year, second year, up to the fifth year, that we were pretty much already within the 3% range. And that it was really those five years and beyond that the gap was much more significant. And so I think by extending it to all staff, we're really not needing to extend the timeframe because the staff went through seniority in the one-through-five area. We're not needing to focus on those. Does that make sense? So I think the 2016 date would be consistent with the other three-year targets that we have in this particular document.
I mean, I'd be happy to make it 2014, so I have no problems with that.
Dr. Jones, did you have a comment on that?
I was just a little concerned in that when, as Mr. Kimball and I get into the budget, and we're trying to calculate where we are, we know that Arlington goes up every year. So even when we do a step and we add a percentage, we're still always chasing. And even though that one-through-five, we know that's going to happen anyway. We are so far behind on that top end that I wouldn't anticipate this year that we would do it across the board, that we would do like what we did last year, where we're really trying to target to close some gaps and really work on having this goal. So having that extra year, if they start to outpace us on one-through-five while we're closing at the top, allows us the fourth year to come back and close the bottom. So that was just, that was my concern. We can certainly, we'll do our very best to get it done in the three years, if that's what we want to set as the date. Mr. Kimball's a budgeting whiz, so I'm sure we can make it happen. It's just more challenging for us, and with staff growth.
And we can figure something out. Just a point of clarification, in terms of our teacher salary skills, and it's really is on the master's, master's 30 and the PhD, we look competitive on, as Mr. Sharp said, on the first five steps. And we're also competitive towards the end of the scale. It's really that middle that we focus on. And we addressed that two years ago by adding an additional toll to those, and that did help significantly, but we're still lacking, as Dr. Jones said.
All right. Thank you. So what's the consensus of the board? 2018, 17, 16?
I am a vote for 16 with Mr. Sharp.
Others? No comment?
I was, I don't know, I was sort of inclined to go with what Dr. Jones was recommending because she understands how the, you know, mechanics will work over the next few years. So I hesitate to change what she suggested.
Well, what?
Mr. Speaker, would you like to speak?
I would love to.
Thank you.
Thank you. So what are you recommending? Because before, I mean, it seems like the cost is the same before you were recommending the three years, which I'd be comfortable with.
We are recommending after, concentrating though, after the first five years, which just takes a portion of our staff. Which just takes a portion of our staff. So if we were focused on after five years, it means that when we get ready to budget, we've got a very targeted group, which gives us, even if it's just a little bit of flexibility, because the way we look at it with the growth that we're seeing, we know we're also going to need to continue to add staff along with salary. And that's going to be a huge driving force in our budget, especially seeing, you know, our enrollment growth again this year. So it's just trying to balance both of those.
So even though one-to-five, we're generally about the same now, you're saying leaving that in would still have a major impact?
It's about the same, but it's where we will be in two or three years' time with Arlington, I mean, we don't know. If they come back and they do, and I think the year before last, they did a huge increase. This year, they did not do as much, so we were actually more robust, we could close it a little bit more. It depends on what they do. Having the extra year for us, anytime we're working with budget and trying to add staff and all the things that we need, it just gives us more time. But certainly, we're going to try to close it as quickly as we can because it's hard for me to do anything in three years because I just, you know, I like to get stuff done. So we will certainly close it as aggressively as we can in the budget.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would just like to, I was looking at all the timelines within this work plan, and I would just like to commend Dr. Jones and the staff here because what I've noticed is everything that's set for September 2013 has already been met. And I'm very confident with what I've seen, at least at George Mason, that the remainder of those timelines will be met in how they have set them out. So I'm confident that if, you know, you're saying 2018 is what needs to be done, then so far, that's worked, so.
Thank you, Ms. Curtin. Yes? Mr. Rasmussen?
I was just seeing if you remember my name or not.
I'm trying. I'm working hard on it.
Lots of names for you.
So, yes, generally, I give great deference to the superintendent, but this is sort of one of those chicken-or-egg things. I mean, this is our work plan, our guidance. I think, look, there are lots of factors here. We have no idea what revenues are going to look like, but they sure are looking up. I'm just sort of, three years of chasing Arlington has me tired. I don't think we have to, I would like for Arlington to chase us. And I think that our teachers deserve that, at least from the scores I just saw on that board up there. So I don't think having that as a target is anything, I mean, the budget's the budget. We'll have what's available, we'll have guidance from the city, we'll have the realities. But to target that, I think, is a worthwhile goal. It certainly shows our support. And I don't think it's a, I mean, yeah, is it a stretch to try to do it next year? Probably. But 2016, I think that's a worthwhile target. So I agree with Mr. Sharp, and I'd say we'd do it.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Maybe we can lawyer this up and say something like, no later than 2018? I'm just concerned, first of all, if we want to make teacher compensation and parity locally a top priority, I think that's great. Will that come? It's sort of like the capital budgets in this city right now, where you could spend hundreds of millions of dollars on all the projects. Something has to go. And if we want this to be the top priority, maybe it comes at the expense of technology, maybe it comes at the expense of school construction, something else. But this will be a commendable but potentially costly initiative, especially in light of all the other things we'll be doing. I think we should strive to do it. I think we need to realize doing everything will be difficult. So maybe we shouldn't box ourselves in too much. I think no later than 2018. If we can do it faster, good for us. We certainly need to keep our feet to the fire on it because, as has been pointed out, the longer you wait, the more expensive it gets. But for what it's worth, I throw that out.
All right. Thanks very much. I think we're at the point where we want a motion, and whatever that motion is ought to lay out that year so that we can adopt it. And I think we've all agreed that we'll put in the higher. I think that was something that we agreed on. I personally feel like the 2018 date is the better one, based on my conversations with Dr. Jones. We can certainly try to beat it if we can. But, and I feel very strongly that this should apply to all staff, not just people here more than five years or less than five years. I think it's a bad optic for new staff to have the school board approve a priority that doesn't include all staff, so. Okay, so is there a motion? Anyone got a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll suggest just amending that one line, and then we vote on that.
Okay.
And then, depending on what happens there, we can then vote on the two documents as a package. Does that make sense?
Go for it.
I move to amend, let's see, this is the second bullet under Excellent Staff in the Falls Church City Public Schools Triennial Plan 2013 to 2015, so that it refers to Alexandria, Arlington, and Fairfax County, whichever is higher, and to the year 2016.
Okay. Is there a second for that motion?
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
What if you want one and not the other? How do you?
Well, if you don't like that, then I think you have to vote no. And then maybe it'll take us a while to get to the permutation you might like. Or maybe you can make the motion to get to that. Or maybe you can make the motion to get to that, right? But I think that's how it, what would you support?
I'd support the higher, the first part.
Right.
And I just think that's a separate question from the other part.
Okay.
Would be my comment.
I agree. I think we all supported the first part.
Yeah.
I think that was understood, unless I mistook everybody's comments. I don't think anybody objected to that. I think it's the second part that there is some division.
Okay, so I think if, when we're voting on this, we're really voting on the 2016 versus 2018 thing. And if you like the date 2016, I'd support it. And if you don't, I would. And if it doesn't pass, then we'll move along to the next possible thing. How about that?
I second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Rasmussen. Is there any questions or comments before we take a vote on this? All right, all in favor of Mr. Sharp's motion, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. No. And are there any abstentions?
Wrong call.
Sounds to me like that did not carry. I believe Mr. Cheney and myself and Mr. Castillo and Ms. Highland voted no. Is that correct? Okay, so is there another, should we have a motion that would include the highest and the year would be 2018?
Madam Chair, and I will move to adopt the documents as presented with the one amendment to that second bullet under excellent staff so that it has language indicating that our goal is whichever is higher among the three jurisdictions presented.
Actually.
Thank you for your motion, Mr. Sharp. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you. There is a second to that motion. Are there any questions or comments?
Yes, I'd just like to add, if we're going to do that, can we, if it's going to be the no hire, can we do no hire and no later than June of 2018?
And no later than? Yes. Yes, yes. So the motion says no hire and no later than 2018. Any other questions? Can we vote on this? All in favor?
Do we need a second on?
We had a second.
On the clarification?
He accepted the change to his. It was a friendly amendment, so we're good there. Yes? Do you have something? Okay, so all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And are there any opposed? Are there any abstentions? All right, thank you very much for your patience on that one. I think that's just really an important thing to get right because this is our roadmap for the next three years.
Good luck, Mr. Kimball.
And he's going to have more gray hair.
I'll just point out that our student member was rather persuasive on that issue.
Yes. Thank you for your comments. All right, moving along. The next item is approval of the Cherry Street ASAC Committee. Dr. Jones?
Okay, sorry, Mr. Kimball.
Ma'am, did you do both documents?
Yes, we did both documents.
You did, okay, very good, thank you.
Yeah, he said both.
Yeah.
When Mr. Sharp said.
Yes.
Okay, for approval of the Cherry Street Architectural Selection and Advisory Committee, that is the name that's in board policy. But just as a reminder, because we are under a current PPEA, which was intentionally written so that we could extend the contract of that PPEA if necessary, this committee does not have to select the architect. We're able to work with the Hess team and continue. We have started, and we have our first formal ASAC committee tomorrow night at central office. And this committee is representative of staff members. We also have added a city staff member, Danny Schlitt, because the property is right next to the tennis courts. And so we are going to try to coordinate very closely with the city on enhancement of both of those properties. And we've been working with the city manager on that. Also, Mount Daniel parents and PTA officers and community members. And the community members live, several of them live in and around the property and have already been quite involved over the last four to eight weeks, 12 weeks. And so we are moving aggressively, hopefully, to be fully working on the project. When I say breaking ground, it will be kind of the gut renovation portion of that building starting in December, January. And again, we're anticipating to take occupancy to start school year next year for our pre-K students.
Madam Chair, just a question.
Sir.
Tony, these four volunteered, were selected, came forward? I mean, they agreed to do this?
Yes, as a matter of fact, they all, all but one of them who's out of town attended a meeting even just with the architects a couple of weeks ago and really were very interested. And the last larger community meeting from the Cherry Street group that was there actually were very also forthright. They wanted Charlie Moore involved, who's also an architect in the field, so.
I just wanted to make sure they had all, they were aware of all this.
Yeah, yes. And I think that's why they wanted all four of them. Because they do travel on business and they felt with the four of them, if somebody had to be out of town, they could really stay connected and in the loop. But again, these meetings are open to anybody that lives on Cherry Street, to people that are interested in the project. So we'll have probably quite a few people that aren't part of the committee that are there. We also, just as a reminder, part of the construction process. I'm very careful to make sure we involve our larger team. So we've already had our food service at the table, technology, people that are coming to meeting. But they don't necessarily want to be at every meeting when we're talking about paint colors and carpet and things of that nature.
All right, very good. Are there any questions about this item for Dr. Jones? All right, is there a motion to approve this?
I'll move that the school board approve the following recommended appointments by the superintendent to the Mount Daniel Architect Selection. It says Mount Daniel, should say Cherry Street, I believe. Cherry Street Architect Selection and Advisory Committee. FCCPS staff members Kathy Huleko, Julanda Young, Karen Bevan, Megan Hershey, Lisa High and Sevi Padilla, city staff member Danny Schlitt, Mount Daniel parents, PTA officer Susan Hendrickson, Jeff Hendrickson and Sandy Reinford, and community members Charlie Moore, Chuck Maron, Chris Roberson and Conway Dodge.
Second.
All right, are there any last comments before we take a vote on this matter? No? Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, very good, thank you.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. All right, next item is approvable of the Technology Advisory Committee. Dr. Jones?
Yeah, this was in anticipation that you would approve the work plan where we are establishing a Technology Advisory Committee structure. And what I've provided on board docs for you is just to give you an overview of what the structure would look like. I would like to start with a much larger group with a Technology Advisory Committee. When you work with an advisory committee, they're fairly small and they have to be to really be able to get a lot of work done. It's hard to have a 50 or 100 people in a committee. But I really feel it's important that a lot of the people that were involved in the visioning process, that were passionate about technology and where we're headed and really want to learn more and also provide a voice, that we start with a large group. We have them all on distribution. And I would like to do some, at least one huge and maybe two large technology sharing sessions where they have a chance to have a voice at the table before we move to the smaller committee. The smaller committee will also be a part of that as well. So it'll be a learning opportunity for them to hear from a lot of the community. Then we'll move to our Small Focus Committee, which is structured very much like the advisory committees that we have already in place, which is four from the community. We have four parents, a student, and then of course instructional staff are all included as necessary on there. Now, feeding into that, we have two expert panels, an infrastructure and an instructional expert panel. Some of them will flow across from one to the other, but to be able to provide feedback and information to our smaller advisory committee. Several of the school board members sent names for the expert panel, which are our community members. We'll also, of course, have our systems engineers. And then we have those people who consult for us that can also be able to just, like Cisco, who's heavily involved with the work that we do, especially in bringing our own devices and the way that we're set up. On the instructional panel, making sure that we also include, and especially so the advisory committee is very well informed, Apple, who we work closely with, Cisco on the instructional side, not the infrastructure side. We have Dell reps. I also would like to involve INACOL. As you know, I'm involved at the state level for virtual learning. And INACOL is an international and national organization that really works with virtual. And we're lucky because in this area, their home base for the United States is just right across the street, not too far. And involving INACOL at the table as we're talking about our high C and how we're moving forward there. We also do have on-staff, Google Certified Staff, as well as Apple Distinguished Educator, we want to be sure is at the table. And we also have SMART Certified Staff. We have two of those in the district right now. So making sure that we're really bringing all the right players to the table to help advise the committee so that we can meet our work plan expectations. And then at the next, what we're approving tonight is the establishment of the advisory committee. And then we'll bring you those names at our next meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. Who has questions, concerns? Do you want to start here? Do you have questions? No, you're good.
I just, I think it's a great step. I think it's an opportunity to really move some things forward. And I appreciate your putting it together and thinking through it fairly robustly in terms of what we need.
Thank you, Mr. Rasmussen. Anything on your part? Mr. Lawrence?
Down this end, Mr. Sharp, Mr. Castillo and Ms. Highland.
Just a couple of observations. First of all, Dr. Jones, will Microsoft be invited to the party?
You know, we could, but we don't, we really don't, I would say, consult or work with Microsoft a lot, other than buy their products. So we could, we certainly could invite them. They just haven't been a big player in the district consulting for us from that perspective.
Might be an interesting conversation to have with them. I guess the only other question I would have with respect to the Small Focus Advisory Committee, whether we want to consider the mix of participants from each school. I could see using multiple teachers, especially at, you know, the Mason MEH and even TJ levels from a, I think there are certain fields that are more susceptible to technology, like math and science versus humanities. So would it make sense to have two teachers from each school?
To be honest, the way that I structure an advisory committee or something of this nature is the same way that like when I was talking about ASAC, there'll be lots of people invited to come and present. And I actually see it as all core areas. I mean, one of the huge requests I have right now is from our history department right now for technology at Mason. It just depends on the teacher and how, where they are in their kind of, you know, growth aspect. So I think it's all core areas. And I do see it different at elementary than secondary as far as the needs and technology tools and what. And we're already different at all levels. But I think we will do that. I just think it's more ad hoc in bringing lots of those people to the table, just like we do with our construction. Getting as many people involved as possible. But these people are just a standing committee. And you know, I really, I started with a much bigger number and then I really felt like this is not, I mean, I've been on long-term strategic planning where you ended up with 20 or 30 people at the table because you couldn't make a decision. But then what happens is when everybody gets around the table, you can't make a decision because it's so difficult to get 20 or 30 people. But I will invite lots of people to the table, be very inclusive, like we've been with construction.
I guess I would suggest maybe your first instinct was right and maybe two from Mason and MEH would make sense. Because again, I think with this kind of issue, there'll be a need for more give and take. And I think just having one representative may not give and take as much.
I'm happy to increase it to, you know, to more, if you're talking about staff, instructional staff, I was just trying to balance it out. But I definitely agree, we have to have a very strong, you know, voice from the instructional, the people that have to do the work with the technology. So I'm happy to increase that if everybody's in agreement of that.
Okay, as long as we keep in mind how many things we already ask our staff to do.
Right.
So, but I think that's good input.
I bet you you'll get volunteers for this. I don't know. I certainly don't, I don't want to drag people to things they don't want to come to.
Yeah. No, thank you for that input. I think that's great. I have a question, which is the Infrastructure Expert Panel and the Instructional Expert Panel, who are, I mean, do those, are they people in the advisory committee that are in those panels? Or this is like a whole different group and how do they?
It is separate.
These are advisors to this advisory committee and who are those people?
Well, the expert panel right now, the names that have been sent to me, we have about six people in the community that work in the technology industry. And infrastructure is one small piece. I say small, it's a critical piece, but it's not the focus of this advisory committee. And really looking forward, how we want to move forward instructionally. The infrastructure is critically important. But I see that as, and there will be people on this advisory committee that may not even want to come to the Infrastructure Expert Panel because they don't know anything about it. And it really just wastes their time. So from the infrastructure side, I also see them. And I've looked at all, I've gone and, you know, Googled them all to see what they do, just to have an idea who would be on the panel. And they all come from really different backgrounds. So I think it's going to be important for the expert panel to be able to share also what their background is, what they see in 21st century infrastructure and where, you know, they would see a school division heading. And having that conversation also with Cisco at the table and our systems engineers to look at where we are as much as we can. Obviously, with some aspects that deal with security, you can't put that out there publicly. But there are a lot of pieces we can. And so I see it as very much a dialogue. But everybody that's on that advisory committee will be part of the Infrastructure Expert Panel if they want to be. But I don't want to force them to do it. The Instructional Expert Panel feeds more into that advisory because everybody that's on that advisory, it's very much an advisement for our instructional practice. So those people will be lots of guest speakers. And, you know, I did something very similar in my previous district. The difference was, and we did this over a two-year period. And I found it incredibly valuable to bring in, like the expert from Dell or the expert from Apple, because they just give a view nationally of what's happening, finding out where your school division is. And even just looking at what they see in the market. What do they see coming down the pike? And sometimes it just helps us all kind of think more creatively and innovatively. So does that help?
Yeah, no, very helpful, thank you.
Welcome.
All right, if there are no further questions or issues on this one, then I would entertain a motion.
Actually, Madam Chair, can I just ask one more question? Does it, I mean, if you think of the infrastructure people as plumbers and the advisory committee is people designing a house, should the plumbers be talking about the plumbing separately? Will they?
That's why it's so critical to have somebody like Cisco there, who makes the connection. Because when we're dealing with educational infrastructure, it's very different than business infrastructure. And I want to make sure that if somebody has a real strength, if it is in security, when Cisco's talking about, as much as we can, how we're set up, how those two coordinate and pair. So it's not that an infrastructure person couldn't be there for instructional, but most infrastructure people aren't really strong on the instructional side. They're just, they're two different worlds in education. Is that what you mean?
Right, and I'm thinking maybe the plumbers and the architects don't need to interact and they're truly different issues.
Right, and that's why I've set up as an expert panel. And when I say there are people on that division, I'll give you an example, like our instructional tech teachers. Some of them are much stronger and probably want to learn about infrastructure, more so than some of the, some of them, we have one who is incredible as an instructional tech teacher, but he really doesn't know anything about infrastructure and doesn't want to know. I have one at the high school who loves all the infrastructure stuff. He would probably want to be there for the infrastructure panel and look at it as a growth and learning opportunity for him because he likes both sides. So it would operate separately, but then anybody that's on that advisory panel that's in their comfort zone would definitely, I think, want to come.
Yes, I don't know, maybe you want a little dotted line instead of an arrow. Because I think it'll be a little more ad hoc than you've got it teed up.
All right, is there a motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move that the school board approve the superintendent's recommendations for the composition of the Technology Advisory Committee to review and assess, to review and establish necessary instructional supports for budget FY '15 and beyond. Once a membership has been determined, the committee's work will commence.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Are there any opposed? And are there any abstentions? All right. Awesome. Moving right along, we have a construction update from Dr. Jones.
And obviously, since our last meeting, we've opened a new wing and moved children in there. So that's been very exciting and fun to see. Task one, task two, we're working through the punch list on task two. Most of what we have left are things like the rooms still have construction locks on them. They look like regular locks. But when they shipped us the locks, they were going to, we were going to end up with two master keys, going to end up with two master keys, one for task one, one for task two, and we said, no, send it back, because we want one master key for the building. We also have, like, the, there's handles on the library door where they, when they shipped, they're the wrong size, so they sent those back, but it's very, very small items. The, the teachers are loving this space, I've visited every classroom at TJ today. I'm over there every morning and every afternoon, just doing a walkthrough, just to make sure, little things, like if we've missed paint, or caulking, or something, making sure they're getting it all done. But it's great, and we're just thrilled that it's our task two. If you talk to Marie Harbison, you know, she knew she wasn't supposed to be in that music room until December. So, for her, and I was in there today, and I think the most, the neatest thing about, about that whole lower level is it's a great, it's a great space in that building now, where, to me, I always called it the dungeon, because it just felt like that. It wasn't a great, didn't have a great feel. When you go in her music room now, and we will be having an opening and celebration, I'm just one, teachers to get schools started first, but she has just this wall of windows and a door that opens right outside, I got there today, half the kids are outside, you know, doing things with music, part of them are inside, just, it's a beautiful space. And of course, we all love the castle, that's just part of the fun. Cherry Street, working very hard, it was in construction today for about two hours on Cherry Street, because we know we're on an aggressive timeline, and so we expect to hit our target, hit the ground running there. And then, of course, Mount Daniel, hoping to have, you know, some sort of request for proposal, and when I talk about enrollment in just a minute, I mean, it just, our enrollment is definitely showing that the School Board is making some very good decisions, slowing down, and really thinking about what is the best proposal for Mount Daniel, because we have to figure the second grade issue out, because we're going to be short classrooms, we're short right now. So, I mean, as far as everything is full, so, thank you.
All right, thank you very much, and congratulations, Dr. Jones, to you and Sevy, and your staff, and your consultants, and everyone who got that done, it was just an amazing thing to witness. I, you know, I drove by the building every other day for the past three months to see what was being done, and I think it's just outstanding, and I took my daughter over there to visit, and she was just awestruck, she thought it was amazing, so, good job to everybody involved on that.
Madam Chair, can I just ask a quick question of Dr. Jones? You said there's going to be an opening celebration, will that be open to the public?
Yes, we want to do an actual official opening with inviting city council and scoreboard members, and have some sort of ribbon-cutting type event, and then leaving that building open for small tours in the evening, and inviting community, and we may even do two different nights, we have a lot of people that want to come walk through the building, and you can't really do that once children are there during the day, and it's not open a lot at night, so, and we don't rent the new section of TJ, we, we're not, it's not on the rental pool, and we try not to do a whole lot of rentals at elementary anyway, so it's not, other than the gyms and those sorts of areas. So, that's coming, and it will be definitely open to the community, so they can come in and see.
Yeah, because I, there's been a lot of interest expressed, and so I think the more we can show the community what, what has been accomplished through the hard work of a lot of people, I think that'd be great.
Absolutely, and if I could also just dovetail on what Ms. Carney just said, just to think, Sevy Padilla, that, you know, he's over our facilities, and in our custodial and maintenance staff this summer, and our technology staff, those three teams really worked around the clock, because it took so much staff effort, and, you know, you forget, I mean, some of, our teachers are all very aware, just that we were also doing all this grade configuration and shifting, so when you're moving eighth grade back, and fifth grade back, just the amount of moving that was taking place, it had nothing to do necessarily with brand-new construction and moving the classrooms in that building, and also establishing pre-K at TJ, building, you know, getting the fence built for their own little play school area, building those little tiny tykes houses that little kids play in that take literally five hours to put together. But they just worked harder, and they will all tell you, this is the hardest they've, and some of them have been here for 20 years or more, this is the hardest summer they've ever worked, so I can't thank them enough, or we would not have been able to move in, just having a great team of people.
Yeah, I mean, I, we moved pre-K from Mount Daniel campus to TJ, we moved fifth grade from Henderson to TJ, we moved eighth grade from George Mason, Mary Ellen Henderson, that's just a lot of moving parts. And at TJ, we had, what, 4,000 boxes?
Yes, I think it was 5,000.
To pack and unpack, I mean, it was, it's a lot to do. So, you guys did a great, great job, just amazing. All right, the next is Status of Unaudited Fiscal Year 13 Ending Balances, Mr. Kimball.
Oh, yes, have provided the Board with a, an estimate of unaudited FY13 balances by the fund, by each fund, each of our three funds, operating budget, community services, and food service, and although these are unaudited estimates, they are, they are pretty darn close, they're as of September the 6th, last Friday, and actually reflect the numbers that were submitted to Richmond as part of the annual school report, so really don't anticipate these changing significantly at this point. For the school operating budget, we ended the balance, we ended the fiscal year FY13 on June the 30th, with an ending balance of $966,000, and this is slightly higher than we were anticipating, for a number of reasons, there were some obligations that we ended up, up close, ended up closing at, at the end of the year, that, that spending didn't occur, and we did receive, over the summer, more sales tax revenue than, than we had anticipated. We accrue back July and August sales tax, because those were actually collected in May and June, and there was really an, an upturn, an upturn in the, in those two months, we collect, collected some more revenue, yeah. So, of, of the 966, the School Board had, has gone ahead, went ahead and programmed as part of their FY14 budget, $486,000, about half of that amount, to support the FY14 budget, which actually puts us in a very, very good position, because that means that the other half, the $480,000, is now, we know that that is available to program in to the FY15 budget, and so we won't be facing the same issue we faced this year with a large drop in, in beginning balance, that that's now beginning to stabilize, so that's, that's good news there. The Community Service Fund ended the fiscal year with about $823,000 in fund balance, about half of this is attributable to the daycare program, and, and in fact, the, the program used a fund balance of $305,000 for this year, a large chunk of that is actually coming from the daycare program to, to buy playground equipment at, at our elementaries and the, and the middle school program. And the Food Service Fund ended the year at, with $166,000, $167,000. And you, you will notice with, with all funds, that the net financial activity over the course of the year was, in fact, negative, that the, that the ending fund balances are less than the beginning fund balance, and with the exception of the Food Service Fund, these were all anticipated and, and planned, that, that, that the Board had programmed $1.4 million in, to be used to support the FY13 budget, and in fact, that, so that, that was part of the plan, that in terms of the Community Service Fund, a large chunk of that fund balance, almost $300,000, was, was plugged in to support buying furniture fixtures and equipment for Thomas Jefferson, so that was all part of the larger plan, so the negative number should not, not be of concern there. Where they should be of concern is in the Food Service Program, where the fund balance dropped by about $60,000, and that really is primarily attributable to the first four months of last year, September through December, when we were implementing the new federal meals guidelines, and, and food sales just, just fell off. So, actually, so, you know, we're looking pretty good, and we also, where the, where the unencumbered, unobligated fund balances stand right now, is that, is that they're, they're adequate to support the FY15 budget, which we will begin working on shortly.
Thank you, Mr. Kimball.
Quick question, I know it's early first month, any indication on food service this year in terms of how well it's doing? I mean, is it?
The only indication I have at this point is that I, I do get an email message or notification every time somebody makes a deposit using authorize.net to put money into their child's account, and my phone's been dinging about every 45 seconds. And so, so that's exciting, and actually, not, not at this point, but thank you for your interest, because we're going to be watching that very, very, very closely, and we're cautiously optimistic we're going to have an excellent year.
Anecdotally, students say it's better, so, that's a good thing.
All right, anything else, any other comments on this? All right, thank you for that, Mr. Kimball, for that good news. Superintendent's report, Dr. Jones?
Okay, I just have a couple of things. First of all, just with hiring, we do have our largest hiring class ever in the, in the history of our school division, and, you know, I just, while I'm thinking about budget, and we're already thinking about next year's budget, I can't thank the School Board enough for allowing us to build in the staff that we put in the budget this year, we needed every single one of the teachers, and we just feel like, because we were able to post those positions very early last spring, our hiring class is probably one of the best we've seen, it is just a phenomenal group of teachers, so just very exciting to see. Also want to say congratulations, you probably saw it in the morning announcements, to Sperry Broadcom, who is a national finalist in the science fair, Masters National Finalist, and that'll be held here in Washington DC, that's really exciting. As you know, as some of you may be aware, we started the science fair in middle school, which I think had been something quite a few years back, and had been lost and gone by the wayside, and it was just a great event last year, and we're happy to see our kids engaged in that again. We held run for the schools this past Sunday, which was an absolute blast, I didn't run, but I took lots of pictures, I think I sent out about 20 tweets of everybody, and it was just so fun, our principals were running, we had a lot of staff there, so congratulations to Debbie, I think this was the largest amount of runners that Debbie has got, that they've had, in the history of the run, and it was just a great, just went off without a hitch, it was a fun day. I also want to say a special thanks to, our convocation was awesome this year, and Mary Beth always helps me pull that together, and special thanks to her for working on that. We also had t-shirts again, which I didn't realize what a big deal that was here, but it was a big deal, whenever the budget got really tight and the t-shirts went away, but I think most people that know me know I'm very prudent, and I'm very careful about how we spend money, so the one thing that we did do this year was seek out a donor that knew they were donating forth the staff shirts, but we felt like morale-wise, it was a great thing to do, and you'll see the FCCPS shirts all over the place, and they were donated, did not come out of operational money, so we're very excited about that. We also had our official first field hockey, at-home game, away game, that was very, very exciting, all these colored hockey sticks. I also want to point out just a couple of things that we put on board docs for you tonight, that are not items, but just to point out that they're there, the legal flow chart was updated, because as we work on lots of construction and land, I just wanted the land attorneys noted that we're using, which is Walsh Kaluchi, Kaluchi, so that's been added. We also have the VSBA update on the legislative positions that our School Board supported and put forward, and on behalf of the State Task Force for the Virtual Learning, I just want to say thank you, they were very excited that our School Board stood behind that legislation, and then VSBA is going to carry that forward. There's also a document about the community visioning that's on there, and you'll notice, when you look at that, on the website, we really want to tie community visioning then to the work that you've done tonight, with the priorities, and then have the work planned, so that they're all three right there together, and the community can really see how they feed and, and are connected. The last but not least, and the most fun of all, is our student enrollment growth, and I, as I was working on that today, I didn't, earlier, we put it on very late this afternoon, but I just felt like it was important for you to see the monthly membership, you know, on an actual School Board meeting, not just at a work session, and it, we were projected to be at 4.5% as a whole school division, right now, we're at 6.3% as of today, and probably, which I don't think it's going to surprise anybody on the School Board, you've all paid lots of attention and seen all the strollers around town, our Mount Daniel growth, if you remember, last year in kindergarten, was a 9.5% increase, over the year before, this year it's 19.
Oh, my God.
So, we have a lot of people with little kiddos coming our way, and we're going to continue to watch that and monitor it, and see what happens. Right now, we're at 2,415 who grace our schools every day, 2,444 when you count our itinerants, and some students who are home-based, you know, instruction. So, we are definitely growing, and as I was sitting here about five minutes ago, the news press just put out preliminary numbers show more explosive growth in Falls Church School enrollment, because while you were in closed session without me, he was checking up on our enrollment numbers. So, everybody knows now, but we are definitely growing. So, thank you.
Wow, that's, that's amazing. I have to say, every place I go in town, people are asking me how many kids we have this year, and what the growth is looking like, because, because everyone's interested, so thank you for that. Just to remind the community and the Board, we'll get our official enrollment numbers, where federal funding and state funding are based on those numbers, as of the 30th of September, and so we may still see some move and shake in that, and then during the course of the year, things happen, people come and people go, but, gosh, 19%, that's crazy. Okay, moving along to Board and Student Liaison comments, why don't we start with Mr. Sharp on that end, then we'll come down, and down to me.
Just a quick note about some activity during the summer, I was pleased to take four items to the Legislative Positions Committee of VSBA, and as you saw in the, the reports, all of them passed, some modifications, but for the most part, the positions were accepted. And while I was there, I was very pleased to meet a couple of the representatives from the, the Virtual Task Force on technology that Tony had chaired, and just about the first thing they said to me was, Tony is dynamite. You know, it wasn't, wasn't something that maybe we didn't know, but to hear it from third parties, just sort of volunteered, you know, unsolicited comments of that nature, it was just, just, just great. Also during that session, Ryan McElveen, who's a Fairfax County Board Member and member of the, the Policy Review Committee, pointed out that their School Board schedules on an annual basis 800 hours of meetings, so, you know, we, we think we have a tough, tough job here. He impressed me that things are, things are even more hopping elsewhere.
Where's he from?
He's Fairfax County School Board, he's, he's one of the relatively new fellows.
Wow. 800 hours.
I was pleased this evening to attend the PTA social for about five minutes, and it was, it was very, very well attended, lots of people were having a great time with ice cream, and, and members of the community were dishing out the goodies to go with the ice cream, including Dr. Tees and some others. Over the weekend, of course, we had the Run for Schools, and I'll let Charlotte say some more about that, she's the better runner of the group here. But I did happen to see, doing the registrations there, was Jenny Aaron Zeller, who also was very instrumental in helping to get our media center at TJ up to the tip-top level that it, that it is today. Bob Palermo and I ran for a little while, he, he much longer than I, had to drop, drop off, but anyway, I was very, very pleased to be able to just thank him for his leadership during all this period with TJ, and, and he, he pointed out to me that there are roughly 100 new students there, besides those who are moving from Mary Ellen Henderson, 100 above the movers in the fifth grade. On Sunday, I was going afternoon into work, and I happened to meet Farrell Kelly, who is at MEH, and was unfortunately having some difficulty in the last couple of weeks, he had broken two elbows.
Oh.
In a bicycling accident.
Oh, my gosh.
But he had about 17 or 18 of his students come in and help him to move, so that he got his room all set up on time, and things, things went just fine anyway, and that was at Mary Ellen Henderson. For schedule looking ahead, the Chamber has a couple of events, they have a mini golf night next Tuesday, September the 17th, at Upton Hill, and that begins at 5:30. They also have a mixer on the, two weeks from tonight, September 24th, and that will be a creative cauldron, that's at the art space, Falls Church. Last night, I attended the Fairfax Partnership for Youth Board Meeting, and as you know, they're very active in mentoring and in mental health services for youth, and they did point out to me that today is World Suicide Prevention Day, and I think their, their focus on, on this is, is something that's a day-in, day-out focus, and they're, they've impressed on me the, the importance of mental health, such that, you know, to the extent I, I was concerned about how we were dealing with some, some issues that we apparently have at, at our high school, where we, we, we asked for a fence to be put around the, the building, I also asked about how, in the instances where we do have folks that we're concerned about, how do we, how do we feel we have resources available to us, and Tony was very responsive in, in contacting the police officers, who, they, they usually are the first responders to such a situation, any time of the day or night, they would go and, and ask questions, and find out, you know, what, what person is needing, and if they need some mental health service, they would be able to access the services at the Woodburn Mental Health Center, and again, any time of the day or night. And I was very, very pleased to hear that, thank you, Tony, for, for seeking out that information, and I think that's, that's as important as any of the, the, you know, more, more visible things that we could do, to, to be sensitive to people's needs, I think is, is something that's going to go a long way to help us have a secure environment, and one that's, one that's supportive of both the people inside the schools and on the outside. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Guste, any comments this evening?
I would just like to commend Dr. Jones for a great convocation, and Ms. Highland for, for representing the schools opposite the mayor, there was a lot of energy there, and I, I was really happy to, to attend, and there were rave reviews of the t-shirts. Also happy to see- Also happy to see how many people are walking and biking up to school. I actually biked up to the convocation. Our neighbors in, in the area are doing a lot of walking up to MEH, and I think that's great. And I hope we can see it through as, as things get darker and a little dicey here, that everybody will keep that up.
Thank you. Ms. Highland?
I, now that school year started, meetings were starting up again, and I attended the PTSA meeting at George Mason last week. The first meeting of the year tends to be pretty well-attended, and it was, again this year, usually to hear Mr. Bird's report, but I think most of the parents there were interested in hearing about technology from Mr. Knight. That took up the bulk of the meeting and a lot of questions. He was, you know, very helpful with giving information about how to get onto gradebook and how parents can get their access codes. And I, I emailed him the next day and got mine, so it worked. And then he also talked a lot about the bring-your-own-device and gave a lot of interesting and helpful information, particularly, this is for high school students, it's not really something that's applicable, I think, to the other schools. But I think it's something that I think parents were getting a better understanding of. And so it was a, it was a helpful presentation, and I understand that he'll be talking with other groups about this. And he's had, they've had class conversations with the students as well, so that was really helpful. And also, Mr. Kane was there talking about the food services specifically for George Mason, but he talked about the, the greater variety of options, and it really did sound good. And a lot of the parents, to the point that you made, were talking about how they've gotten really good reports from their kids. And he also talked about how he's starting a hydroponic garden that they're going to, you know, use almost immediately, as soon as it gets up and running, for, you know, cooking there. So I thought that was really interesting. The next meeting will be on the 2nd of October, and the program will be study skills, time management, and executive function, which is also a really great meeting every year. So I encourage people to attend that meeting. I attended the athletic boosters meeting last night with Mr. Chaney, and that was a great meeting, you know, a lot of good information to report. Most of the Redskins tickets have been sold, which was great. They, all the money is been paid for, for the lights. Right now, they're working on getting naming rights, and they have some creative ideas for that. That's been worked out, that they're currently working on, which was interesting to hear about. The eighth graders who are participating in sports right now, because they're not at George Mason, there's a system set up where they have a half an hour study hall between when school is out at MEH and when practices begin. And so far, so good. It's a work in progress, but their, Coach Horn is monitoring it. Practices now generally need to start at 3:15. It used to be 3:45 to give kids a chance to do things after school, and that can't happen now because of the eighth graders who are participating in JV athletics. So there are some changes in the, you know, the climate of how things were done previously, but it seems that, you know, this may be, an unintended consequence would be students would start using Mustang block in a more productive way since they don't have the time after school. And so I thought that was interesting. One last thing that was discussed during Coach Horn's report was the, the fact that our population at the high school is higher than it has been, even when you take the eighth grade out, to the point where, you know, now we have six divisions versus three in athletics in the state of Virginia, and we're, we're 2A because we're the higher of what was previously single A. This March, they will be assigning the new divisions, and because of the, where our population is expected to be at that time, we would most likely be 3A, which was very unexpected. So, and that's, and he doesn't anticipate that would change. So that, that was, you know, an interesting new wrinkle.
Okay. And that's it. All right. Thanks very much. Mr. Chaney? You're good? Mr. Rasmussen?
So just a few things. One, I'm glad to hear about the hydroponic garden, just because I'm glad to hear there's some legitimate purpose for hydroponic equipment. I never knew. All these years. Amazing.
He says you don't learn anything at school board meetings.
So, I know. So I've always wondered. Second, I had to throw a shout-out to Williams College, named the number-one liberal arts college in the country today. And that's a recruiting tool, if anything, and Mike Curtin owes me $5. Finally, I attended the first Parks and Rec meeting this week, and there continues to be some degree of confusion, if not downright angst about our charging practices and even, and it became a little bit uncomfortable in the discussion on like proffers and things like this. So much so that at least one of the members of the committee was saying that the schools were sucking out all the money from the proffers and the development in the parks were not really. And it was my understanding, and I, I asked the superintendent about this, and that the school board really doesn't get any of that money. It goes into this city's general fund. Granted, there may be like accounting force impacts, but it's not like the money is coming to the school board. So I suggested that the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee please set up at one of their, at their earliest convenience to invite either Hunter or Tony to come and, and let's talk through some of these things, because it's really getting a little confusing, I think, in terms of what we're doing financially with them. And I don't want that to, to go any further than it needs to be. So, thank you. That's all I have. Oh, great job with our scores.
Oh, by the way. Yes?
Just real short, the, the tour of TJ was just fantastic, and I really do feel like we almost got a new school for an incredibly cheap price. I mean, a, a, any chance you get to go through there, it's not just the castle or, you know, Marie's room, but, you know, the, the difference between her cave and, and this is, is amazing. But, you know, you go to the new wing and you're looking out, and 15 feet outside your window, you've got this, you know, giant sycamore tree, and it's, it's, it's not just the inside, it's the way they, they fit it into the space, the way it looks, you know, when you're on the outside, when you're on the inside. I mean, my, my son and I walk our dog down the, the path along the, the water, and literally the last one where they had, you know, the construction fencing was pretty much down everything, he stopped in his tracks and just said, wow. And it's, it's hard to get an 11-year-old boy to say that about a building.
I thought you meant your dog did that.
No, no, no.
That's awesome.
Yeah. Now, let me, let me clarify that. That was not the dog, although I'm sure the dog was thinking it, so.
Sorry.
And other than that, just to, to follow on the theme of food that a lot of people have mentioned, and again, bringing my son into this, not the dog. He came back from his first week at MEH, and he said, best food ever. And this is a kid who loves his food. So, you know, for him to say that really made a difference. And it wasn't me asking either. He just came back and said, you know, obviously four days, but it made enough of an impression that when he got home, he felt like saying something. So, that's it. Thank you.
Wow, that's awesome. Ms. Curtin?
So the fall sports season is up in swing, and so I invite you all to come out in the community to all the football games, volleyball, golf, field hockey, everybody else who's playing fall sports, in case I'm missing anyone. Very cross-country meets. Those are far away though, but, you know, support all of our teams. One thing about the after-school sports, our teams are very appreciative just because of our sizes that we have had eighth graders be able to participate. I think it's a great way to grow our programs and sustain them. I really haven't heard a single positive thing from anybody, grades nine through 12, about starting practices at 3:15. People are not thrilled, but it's, you know, it's sort of an unavoidable consequence. And I would say that opposed to Mustang block being used for the intention of academic help in instruction, it'll probably be used more for club meetings now, which was not the intention at all. At least, there was points in time when the administrators had said that was not allowed. I don't really see that being a feasible request anymore, just because so many of our students are so involved. And asking students to miss club meetings that they are so dedicated to because they also want to be an athlete is just something very hard at our school when so many students are involved in so many different activities. I was also at the PTSA meeting, and I would just echo the same thing for lunch food. I had everybody coming to me, you know, on the first day of school and throughout the whole week, saying, Maeve, is this like a new thing? Is this going to be happening? This is great, everything's delicious, and it looks good and it tastes good. And so, thank you to Mr. Kane and his team and everybody. That's really great. And then just one last thing, in, with all the advisory committee appointments and resignations and everything today, I would just ask that we explore the potential to add more student positions on those advisory committees. There are some on ESOL and Gifted, but just looking at some of the other committees and seeing if it would be appropriate to put a student in that place. Because I think our opinions are valuable in having everybody, you know, we can pick students who are very passionate in a certain area. So, that's all. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. I simply want to thank the Education Foundation, everybody from Deb Hiscott to the board for the run for the schools. It was terrific. It was, the goal was to have 500 people registered. We had 620 people registered, so exceeded that goal. And so many volunteers there for a Sunday morning at 8:00 AM. I thought it was just outstanding. And congratulations to Karen Sharp and Charlotte Highland for representing the board so capably in running, walking, run-walking, skipping, or whatever it was that you guys did on the course. But it was just really, it was just, I love those opportunities where families come out, staff comes out, community members come out, and everybody just has a, a great time in the community. So it was, that was really great. And welcome back to everybody for another year of school and school board and all the things that we do here to educate our kids. We have a lot of work we've agreed tonight to do in the next three years and specifically this year. And so strap in. I think it's going to be a busy year, but I think we're going to accomplish a lot of really good things. And I'm very excited about it. I think that's it. And the next thing on the agenda is approval of minutes. And I have a recommended action here that says, I ask for unanimous consent that the school board approve the minutes of June 25, July 9, July 16, and July 23rd. Without objection, so ordered. Thank you, Mr. Rasmussen, for that. And there are some materials for board review. Please take a look at those. And unless there's objection, we will adjourn for the evening. And thank you for your patience. I know this was a really long meeting, and we'll try to keep them a little bit tighter now that we've caught up from our summer break. Thanks, everyone. Good night.